thirty. During this meeting of Manchester by the sea select for to order. Jeff. Brian.
Here.
Kathy.
Yes.
And here and John.
Is here.
Okay, the first our order of business is public comment on non agenda items. I see a hand. Please stand identify yourself give your address.
Yes, um, my name is Jim Starkey thirteen Tuxport Road.
Thank you.
All right, how long do I have?
Um, please make it as short as you can.
I'll make it short as possible. On January sixth of this year, this committee passed. The provisional loring programs. Which was a comprehensive fair and transparent program that allowed people on the waiting list to rent more ins at boatyards. That had previously been strictly illegal. Since that time, virtually every element of that program has been violated seriously. The most important element was that the only people eligible. To rent more ins were people bona fide members of the. On the waiting list who'd been there for at least one year. The harbor masters assigned twelve people to rental more ins of which only three were actually. On the waiting list nine were not. And that is a strict violation. Secondly. It was supposed to be transparent. Which means that first it required that the. Harbor master list the same information about people on the rental list as regular mornings. He has not done that. He published names. But he did not publish both them names, so you cannot possibly tell. Who has a rental morning who does not. Third. There is a requirement that every boat on the morning permit. Rental morning program have a distinctive morning sticker on their transom. I would now could look today, the twelve votes on the rental mornings, only three have any sort of waterway sticker. And none of them are visible from six feet away to be able to tell whether they're a rental morning sticker or not, I don't know what they are, I know they're not distinctive. I have pictures of them and you cannot tell what they are. The next problem. Deeper than this. Is the. Existence of most of those more ins in two thousand. Twenty-four. The harbor master without any authorization whatsoever. Gave Manchester reen ten extra morning permits. That they could use for rental. And he added another two this year. There is no basis in our worrying regulations for that. And the state D E P rules. Require that the harbor master assign more ins off of a written policy. Which does not allow that. The. To make things a little bit worse, you might wonder. What the harbor committee has to say about this? The answer to that is nothing. The harbor master sent them a communication saying that he was being investigated. And suggested that they not take this up and the harbor committee has an official policy of not discussing the Manchester Marine Warrens. This is a mess. This can't be resolved tonight, obviously, this needs some attention, serious attention. What is happening in the harbor is not what was approved by this committee, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um. Are there any other public comments? Here or online?
Yeah, I actually had something to.
Yes.
Um, so not sure if this is not agenda item or related to the action items, but we've had some conversations with the residents. On Ocean Street.
Uh huh.
And um, we used to have an action item. Related to that, you know, coming up the options. I I've heard that the grant we applied for most recently, we were denied. Um, so I think the neighborhood would like to get together with Tony um, to discuss. What we are going to do with a hundred thousand dollars that was approved to town meeting. Um, if we can get that moving, they the residents would appreciate.
Okay, so you'd like to have that put on the agenda items?
Yeah, yeah, and I think just the action is, and I think for us, a meeting with Tony and the and the residents.
Okay, first.
First, but I I think we should track it on our action item list, so we don't forget about it.
Okay.
If that's okay.
If I can just add that. I've spoken with one resident there, I think it would be, and and I've spoken with our D P W superintendent and Sue, I I think we have. A. List of neighbors in the area from past. Grant application, you know, uh. Efforts. Um, but it would be really helpful, you know, if any. Residents in that neighborhood are watching tonight, um, if you could reach out to my office. So that we can put together at least like an email contact list. So that we can organize, you know, those neighborhood meetings.
Yeah.
Most efficiently possible.
I I think that's terrific, we, I think we can start with the list we have and then, you know.
It'll glow.
On that.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Are there any other? Comments? Um, there is no chairman's report. Um, this meeting is being recorded, forgot that, um. Are there any other things that we need to track on our action list? Yeah. Thank you. Um. The first item on the agenda is the singing beach ocean rescue. And the recognition for John Carlson and Jake Seymour. And I think you are prepared to speak to that. Carol, you, thank you.
I share Marshall with Dr. Parks and Rec, um. I know I've already reached out to you guys through email, but just to give anyone else a kind of a recap, I'm trying to be brief. Um, but I would like to recognize two residents, J C Moore and John Carlton, as well as my staff, Ashley and Dustin, Kate. Lifeguard and Owen Doyle over there, assistant beach manager, um. And the two residents are risked their lives on Sunday, August twenty-fifth to save two swimmers. For one swimmer, I'm going to let you guys speak to um, that were in distress on singing beach. And on the surface, it it was almost a routine call swimmer in distress and lifeguard had these stabilized the person on the beach, the police with the A T V were right there. Brought the victim up to the circle where there was a waiting ambulance who checked him out and they refused to go, so. You know, the short story is swimmer in distress, we probably all saw it on Facebook, sorry to comment posted it, swimmer in distress, refuse care. That's it, end of story. Everything went exactly how it's supposed to um, for our emergency response. Then, as the story behind the story started to evolve, I learned a lot more, um, I learned about two residents, John and Jay, um. Trying to really try not to get emotional, um, who separately were on the beach with their families. Um, and they heard the distress calls coming from the water and did not hesitate, but ran in. Have to say there was a third man who we're not sure who it was, still remains unidentified, that also was a big help. But the two men went right into the water during very hazardous conditions at the time. Very good swimmers and it was hazardous for them too, and together they saved. At least one of the two teenagers and the third person saved the other. Um, once hearing this stories, it really became apparent to me that this was no routine emergency response. But more of a story of. You guys want to hear, but charisma and selflessness. By the two men. With the knowledge I now have, I can see that this went from a routine emergency response to a near tragedy for the entire community. Stories very easily could have gone another way and we'd be meeting to discuss healing as a community. And thought that is not what we're here for, um, we are getting public recognition and thank instead. There are really no words strong enough to fully express the depth of my gratitude. Uh, what you did was more than an act of courage. It was enough to compassion and selflessness. John Carlson, J C Moore, Natalie and Owen. Um, thank you very much for your bravery. Thank you for your quick thinking. Thank you for being there when it mattered more than anything and what you did will not be forgotten. And I will give. Two gentlemen a chance to speak because they know the stories better than I do and it's a great opportunity to really um, get across to the public. About water safety and awareness. Thank you.
Was that true standard? What are we supposed to do here?
Well, you know what, it sounds like you kind of started first, so maybe if you want to tell a little bit of your story, just to make people a little bit aware of.
Yeah, and I I think that that's the genesis of um, I'll speak for John here of us coming here tonight, we very much appreciate the recognition and um, we're humbled by it, um, but really the. The fear to me is like diet processing this with my family and other friends that were on the beach and their report back was, it looked so normal and that you guys had complete control of the situation, um. The reality is, you may, you probably had better control than I did, um, but it was not that. And you know, thinking about the kids that were there and the 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 people in this community who I care deeply about is to understand a little bit of. What that ocean can bring at times, um, and try to make informed decisions about about what you do, because the reality is is. I probably was very close to not being well enough equipped to to handle that situation, um, John is a very different story, um. But not trained in that situation and it turns out I'm not in great shape, um, so I was humbled pretty pretty quickly during it. Um, but no, it did start with the third gentleman who, if this message could get to him, I think John would say the same thing, we'd love to talk, um, we've had an opportunity to talk multiple times and it's been. Very healthy, I think, for both of us, um, but he did, he saved the first child, um, that's when I recognized that he was. Trying to fight him in, he was too far for me to get to, but they got washed up onto shore and essentially like what I remember is he him dropping the kid down on on the grounds safely. It was zero hesitation diving back in into the water and that's when I recognized that there was there was a head bobbing out past the uh. Past the wave, so. Um, you know, I happy to discuss like what went on during it, if you guys want to hear, I'm also happy to to give the stage to John to kind of kind of put some context to if he wants to, whatever you guys want to do here.
Well, first of all, thank Jay. Because together we did as a team. Uh. Still just kind of put a uh, tragic, but um, I was with Caroline, my wife, and. He was getting ready to go and all of a sudden I heard somebody yell, somebody's drowning. I turned and I saw a head in the water, I think I saw him go down, but the bottom line is I just ran. Stripping my clothes off as I'm running, um, handing my phone to a woman that had no idea who she was. I said, and I was in the water before I knew it going out. Luckily, um. I've had training as a dive master to rescue. People and exactly what to do and what not to do. And uh, once I got out there. Jay and I together got the kid calm. And was able to bring him in without instinct other than, you know, with the rough conditions, um. Uh, once we got it in, both Jay and I are exhausted. Had we stepped up. Took control of the situation, which I'm thankful for. Got the kid, took care of all the necessities because. People don't know this, but even once you get out of the water, you can drown. Even that being in the water, so it's really important. That not only. People get pulled out of the water. But then, once they're on shore, they get the appropriate care because even on the shore, things can go bad and. All that work and all that effort could be just lost in a split second. And without a note, so it's 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 everybody working together. And um. Came out with a great. Success story, um. I. Talked to Caroline, I said. Like you think it was, I, well, I don't even think. I don't even know if I was thinking, but at the after I just kept thinking, I hope that somebody would do that for our kids. If it was, I mean, even Jay and I are fathers. Um, and we know between the two of us, like, we know a lot of kids in this community and we would do it for anybody and anything. Just like the lead coach, just, you know, it's what you do. So that's, that's all I have to say.
And thank you. We get a lot of good points and uh. We just really appreciate you select word, I believe, that's a significant. Remote verification as well. And we have. Some certain secrets for the two of you, if you come up.
Your free event, oh.
And thank you to everyone else who was involved, um, bringing us from. An utter emergency to a well-handled situation. And I, we appreciate. Your confidence as well as their heroism.
Yeah, I I'm sorry we haven't gotten a chance to meet yet and a lot of it I don't remember, but I remember. How they got there at the exact time I needed her, um, we need to get the kids dry land and I don't, I think I might have, sorry if I swore at you. I can't, I'm done, she acted so instinctively and the community should be very, very, very proud of her, so. Going on.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you all.
Often we don't know when we first hire you guys. And I'm sure you never really sure you if you want to be stepped up.
And and thank you for closing the beach.
Yes.
Right, that undertow was way beyond what anybody should have enjoyed, I mean, thank you.
Well, what people don't know is the day before. My friend and I got yelled at by Howie kindly, very kindly, very nicely. Our two old guys were causing trouble swimming in the ocean. She's very kind.
Very kindly ticked you out.
Well. Pleasant as this has been, I think we should probably move on.
You guys.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. You're great.
Alan. Yeah, of course.
Next item on our agenda, um, okay. Is is um, the planning board, Sarah Creighton, if you talk about the rental meeting, she has some PowerPoint and. Can you?
Yeah.
You're right, is it here? Hello. Oh, oh. I thank you too. I know, I know. Alright, there we go. Um. That Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just. I'm sometimes easier to get my thoughts together and put together some bullet points, so um. Um, so, good evening, everybody, um, Sarah Peyton, Chair of the Planning Board and also Chair of the Harbor. Management Task Force, not in charge of the more ins. Um, so the planning board had a retreat at the end of the um, beginning of the summer and we identified several priorities for the coming year. Those are downtown zoning district, senior housing and driveway entrances. Um, also, we have a long list of future projects, the top, what most important one is rethinking or understanding the um, a few, the future planning for the general district. Uh, the districts D one and D two, there's some. Confusion about those we need to fix, um, and examining the thresholds for special permits, um, so, you know, we've been really working hard on upgrading our zoning, which I I. Think is sometimes was uh, looks like a wildebeest, you know, it's got, yeah, all the parts don't well align with each other and um. Our consultant a number of years ago, we've been chipping away at these exciting um, zoning changes, so um. Should we have a November town meeting is the topic that um, I wanted to just talk through tonight and brief you where we are on a couple of things. If there were a November town meeting, these are the things that we would um. Talk about. Um, downtown district, creating a downtown district. Um, senior housing or a piece of senior housing, driveway entrances, some house skipping, we always have a list of. Uh, things that we can fix quickly when we have time, um, and uh, the accessory dwelling units, um, the Attorney General. Uh, should have come back with their approval hopefully for the two bylaws we did in the spring. Um, and they've asked for another sixty days, which was put in about October fifteenth. There was something you're uh, simple to fix, if they have an objection, we might try to do that if it's complicated, obviously, we don't have time to to really vet it. So quickly, um, why would we do a downtown district, um? First of all, sorry, um, during the M B T A zoning process, it was identified that we were kind of vulnerable to um, the pressure for residential development. Um, we're seeing that with the redevelopment of the cargo property, um, from a large commercial streetscape to residential and have some uh. Uh, small retail. And we held a forum where residents very much said, we um, expect. That it's a commercial retail downtown and uh, not so many words, but what was interesting is all the visioning was about. We can have a commercial this, we can go retail that, and no one said we could change the downtown core into all residential, that was just, it was just assumed that. Commercial, um, we've been talking a lot with the downtown improvement committee, Mark's been going to all the meetings, Gordon Brewster. Um, has been going to all their, he's on there on the downtown improvement committee, Steve and some of the other members come to a lot of our meetings, so we've been going back and forth. Um, and we want to preserve some of the commercial retail uses in key areas, um, we also hired a consultant who's expert in down benches. Um, and to allow and change our zoning to allow mixed use. Um, so the idea is that we would have a new downtown district, a subset of the general district, although it would become its own district. Um, we are going to have a walk tomorrow at five, um, to walk around and say, okay, what about this, should this be in or out? Because you don't want it to make it so big that it's unreasonable or so small that it's. Um, we would allow mixed use in the zoning change, encourage the preservation or expansion of commercial retail and have a. Special permit for conversion to residential, um, a lot of discussion with public about why that, I don't want to get too much in the weeds tonight. Um, our timing is that we had a June forum. So many of you attended. Along with sixty others, um, we've had several planning board meetings with the chairman committee. In July, we had a um, meeting where we had a lot of input from. Business owners, um, as well as the public. We have a working draft during the boundary walk tomorrow. Uh, we'll have another draft at our first meeting in September, we'll be ready to have a public forum or two in September. And a public hearing in October, if we are moving forward for November town meeting. That's. Um, here's what that district might look like, this is the area we're going to walk tomorrow night, so please join us, anybody, you're welcome to to join us. Um, the next issue is senior housing, um, we don't allow senior housing as a special use. Sometimes, um, some communities allow deeded special senior housing and with a density bonus, small or large, depending on the community, um. Having uh, senior housing helps that problem of allowing seniors to age in town. Right now, our zoning allows charitable nursing homes, hospitals and sanitariums. So it's outdated and it doesn't allow those in the L C D, um, so if you're going to have a hospital, one to think that the L C D would actually be the logical place. To have a hospital, we're not likely to have a hospital, but but just as a, as an example of why we need to keep updating this stuff. Um, so we either need to revise that or delete it and and do some other things. Um, what is senior housing, it might be small, uh, converting my home to. Three units that are deeded to be for fifty-five plus, for sixty plus, opportunity. Um, and I would get a density bonus perhaps, that's an example. I've been finding, we've got two drafts on the table that we've been working on for three years, might be medium sized units where um, there could be a uh. A dozen. Senior housing units in one of the districts or several districts or a larger, um, more of a um, senior housing facility perhaps than the L C D. Um. So uh, of course, they will have size limitations, regulations, parking, and um, I think we're contemplating all of them, special permit, permission. We've been working on this for three years, we've had a couple of drafts, uh, Chris, Mary Foley and I held a number of workshops, we interviewed people who had. Built senior housing in Hamilton and other places, um, right now we have a draft and we'll be working on it some more this this month, sort of the same schedule as the downtown. A little bit behind on that, on on, it lags a little bit, but I think we are prepared to meet. Habitual meetings if there is going to be a down November town meeting. Um, and I think we might put this forward incrementally, so we might. First, just do the small and fix the language about the limited martial district and not try to iron out every detail in the middle based on public. Um. Um, the next issue is the general bylaws, um, driveway entrances are regulated in the general bylaws, change we made a number of years ago. The planning board used to go out and sidewalk every single driveway code cut. Now it's the responsibility of the D H W and only those that are sort of oddballs, uh, don't meet the regulations come to the planning board. But what we've learned with the D P W is that um. The regulations in the bylaw are super restrictive, they don't allow for um, special cases where two driveways, for example, makes sense because the geography or the. Um. Or something else, um, and so we want to fix that by doing sort of like what we've done with stormwater, keep the authority in the general bylaws, adopt regulations by the planning board that can be more easily amended as things come up. Create a um. A uh. Special exemption process and um. Move the standards to the regulations, um, Mark's been working with D P W and fire already and has drafted the regulations, so it's really just a uh. Pretty simple change to uh, strip all of that regulatory language out of the jungle bylaws, create planning more authority with the public. There to issue regulations. Um. Some odds and ends, um, you know, we have some language that's still out there that's uh, you know, not allowed by law, so we should strike that, we've got some. Um. Footnotes in the table of uses that are confusing, got more than one, um, and improperly numbered, uh, we still have a list from the um, Mark Obrowski. Um, and like I said, we might tweak the A D bylaw we hear back from the attorney general. So those are uh. We have a list, we will have draft, um, if there's a November town meeting, we'll we'll work hard, probably have a special. Uh, one plus off cycle meeting to hammer those out and all of them, I think, are pretty recent. Um, so that's the, I think that's my last slide on that, um, so um, that's the November town meeting, um, what we would put forward, I don't want to. Get too much in the weeds on any of those issues, happy to talk with you and we will be back to you to tell you more about specifics, you'll see a draft. Um, but that's what we would bring forward in uh, November. So I'll stop there for a minute and.
Still a lot of work to do. Yeah. I'm I'm mostly concerned about the timing, I think it was your first slot. This is ready, everything else was, well, if this happens, this happens, that's ready, if this happens, this happens, that's ready.
Let's just take the downtown for a second.
Yeah.
Just. If we only did that. At least, I mean, I think we could do that certainly, and this many typos in the genre and the driveway is ready and it doesn't make a robust town meeting, um, Mike Eli had a chance to get his uh. Uh, feet wet, um, and um, I I'm sure we would bring a uh, at least a part of senior housing forward. And I mean, whether we bring it comprehensively or whether we. You know, say, let's do the small conversion, then here what the meeting has to say. Um, I do think that I know the M B T A's zoning task force did exemplary public outreach, that was a very complex issue with um. Multi, you know, over the course of, and it's almost unreasonable, we we just, you know, you can't do that for every issue. Multi, you know, over the course of, and it's almost unreasonable, we we just, you know, you can't do that for every issue, I think the downtown issue is. Kind of expected of us, now we can wait till April. The concern is that people now have wind of it, so you know, there's a lot of pressure for residential conversions. For for residential properties, I'm not going to say whether for residential conversions, hard to say. It obviously depends on people's leases and their their own particular circumstances. So. You know, if you've got anything else on the November town meeting, we will, we'll be there. That's kind of, it is certainly your call.
I think Eli has. Eli has asked to speak.
Hi, can you hear me okay? So. Let's see, so first of all, just from a pure logistics standpoint, I'm actually almost home, so if you want to discuss things a little bit more. So I can get home and not be driving, that's fine, and then I can speak. Or I can speak right now, which is your preference.
I think we can probably find five minutes worth of of things to talk about.
Talk about the harbor management.
Yes, why don't you?
All right. All right, Eli, we'll talk back, talk in a minute.
Just before we move on to that. I think it would be helpful if. You could maybe lay out a little bit of a schedule, you know, I know the date isn't set in stone yet, but. There's a lot of.
It would be November tenth.
Okay, so there, and then there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of lead up, you know, required lead up time with zoning changes, so just kind of seeing. What that schedule looks like would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, I think we kind of looked, worked through that today and that. If we would, we would present it to this, I think the, you have to present this like board in your first meeting in October. Then we would hold a requisite planning, public hearing. The next day if we have to, I mean, and. Yeah, we have the.
Yeah, so after we split it to the select board in September, we are meeting in our first meeting in October, we would have the public hearing after that. Sometime between that meeting and town meeting. So. The articles are close enough. That another month with a couple of public input sessions is perfectly a reasonable time period to have it completed. We're really talking about creating just a small, our downtown area, separate district, we've all seen maps. Very specific, very focused zoning for that. There are some differences, but not a lot of dramatic differences from the general district. This is only twenty percent of the entire general district, so it's a smaller area. So it's right now, just in the next few weeks, we'll be doing the refinement of what we drafted. And then the driveway bylaw is pretty much complete, just the final walk through with chucking. The senior housing. We have to, the planning board kind of has to discuss exactly how do we want to break it up or if we want to break the entire. Which was drafted previously to to town meeting or or kind of say, well. There's a density that's already been worked out. And so some of those things, we're just kind of needs to decide how they want to present to. The feedback that we get and Sarah's a lot more to leave with the feedback that they receive as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's kind of a coin, I don't think we have. This is, I'll see this as an emergency. Personally, you know. But. I wanted to just, and we will add some meetings, we'll have to add some meetings in September to to. Chuck through some of this stuff we need to do. But so that, so.
Yeah, my my thing is really just making sure, I know that there's. You know, either by statute or by bylaw, there's required. Meetings and notice, you know, fourteen day notice for a special town meeting, there's certain. Requirements, I'm sure I have to get up to speed on that, you know, as far as. I imagine, I don't know if the FinCom does a a book for a special town meeting. So, right, so, or if there's any materials that need to be printed for the meeting, you know, just kind of having all that stuff in mind. And then, of course, you know, we have to fill out the form for the attorney general for, you know, those dates of those hearings and when they were posted, so that the process. Meets all the requirements, so just making sure that, you know, we do have a special town meeting and we have all that ironed out ahead of time and so.
Yes, for the zoning changes, we have plenty of time to go through and meet all the requirements with the zoning change. Not familiar with the required tax, both town meeting.
So that that's what we would do. Like I said, makes my fault, whole lot nicer if we don't. I just think it's kind of depends on how you feel about the urgency of the downtown zoning, I mean, that's that's the. I think. People during MBTA said this was an issue, we have, we held a forum in June, it was very clear that people want. To. They didn't say zoning specifically, mixed use came up, but. That's the, but I'm not sure we hold town meeting without singular issue. That's, you guys get to make that decision.
I'm reluctant to try to push this this fast. I think that. Because the zoning, the MBTA task was set a pretty high bar. And I'd like to, even if it's a scaled down version of that, and I think right now we're trying to shovel square pegging around hole. And I think we can do a better job. Given the time to really get out there and engage the public, so that's. Something, although I think I appreciate trying to get Eli to slide a bit comfortably, you know, it's an expense down that the town should incur at this point.
But we also want. Changes we put forward to be successful in extent. But you never know how the meeting, how the town feels until you have town meeting.
Until you say you're going to have a town meeting. Until you say you're going to have a town meeting.
No, until you actually have a town meeting, that's what the, I think we firmly learned with MBTA that the 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 noise was disproportionate to the votes.
Realistically, what kind of timeline do we have to decide?
Well. Like I said, I need to find out exactly what the posting requirements are for a special town meeting. Prior to that, any zoning change would require a public hearing, which has its own posting requirements, I think that's a fourteen day notice. In newspapers and. Public places, and then after the hearing, I think you have. Up to twenty-one days to put together a recommendation, I don't know if that if that type of recommendation you would want to get out to the public before the meeting. So there's.
Because I think what we're all asking for is a timeline, right? Need a chart, love your charts, thank you, by the way. Need a picture, timeline, and if November tenth would be the proposed.
I think.
Then to your point, Tony, let's work back from that, right? And when then is the drop dead date by when we need a decision?
I would think it's going to be. Either our next meeting or. First meeting in October would make it really, really close.
The other thing, just to say, just from a, November tenth is right before November eleventh, which is holiday, which makes it a.
Four day weekend.
Potentially four day weekend, so that's not a great.
I'm sure there are good reasons.
Traditionally, we do it on a Monday, I hadn't thought about. November eleventh.
I would think that's not a great day to get.
Do it, we can't do it a week later. Because that's getting into Thanksgiving.
So maybe that we don't have that. It's really up to you, I don't think we have a strong.
Eli, are you at home yet?
I am. Okay, so originally, when I heard about this, there were basically two articles that were going on to, might go under the warrant, sounds like there might be potentially more than that now. So first a question. If, in fact, we delayed until spring. Would you then be expecting to bring more items from that list onto the spring, the annual town meeting?
Good question, I certainly downtown district, certainly the driveway entrances, those are both, I think they're relatively easy to understand, but they would. They're they are our priorities, and I think. Yeah, I think we've been talking about senior housing for three years, so you know that several members of the board are very, very. Anxious to. To do that, so I think that we would have those three, the others on my list, I think we defer.
We won't know, Eli, we won't know until early October if the attorney general has any. Suggests to ADUs. So if we get that in time to include, that would be really, really close, I doubt.
Technical detail would be.
So that could be a spring, possible spring article.
What's the thing delaying? What is it in our ADU article that we're protecting in town that we would lose if we waited until spring?
I don't think anything, I think, I think the attorney general would just rule something. You know, illegal, and it just wouldn't be effective.
So we had two IDU articles, one was the under nine hundred square feet, which is adding regularly sort of guardrails around what is what is required by law. So. If, and we suspect that there may be two pieces of that 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 might be ruled out at work, which is right post. The interesting thing to me is that they delayed ruling on the larger nine hundred and one to twelve hundreds square foot. ADUs, which is unusual, is was surprising because we can tell everybody that kind of painful we want, I mean, it's, that's not, there's no law around that. And so we have no idea why they waited on that. And the short term rentals in ADUs is something we heard very well.
It's also possible that it could just be backlog because every community. You know, the ADU law went in so quickly, everybody was taking it up at spring town meeting, so it could just be backlog and.
My my concern is at the moment, we have no protection. Until the attorney general rules that our bylaw is legal.
I think your zoning goes back to the date of, your effective date goes back to town meeting.
Once approved.
Once approved.
Today, no, that would change.
Well, it doesn't much matter because I don't think you've got enough time in your timeline for them to come back.
Unless we hear during September, we can make any correction.
I would say if we're going to have a November town meeting, we'll pick up the phone and call them and say, listen, we want to.
Right, so so I. I actually like the idea of having a separate town meeting dedicated to this topic. There is more proposed zoning changes than I thought, I I thought it was only going to be one or two, but it seems like you have a potential list. And. Before we throw in the towel and say we're not going to do a town meeting, I'd like to see a timeline. Because what I'm hearing from the people who are doing the work is that it's doable. And I just wonder, we all got. Upset with what happened with the cargo building. The long time between now and next April. How would we feel if we said, nah, let's not have a town meeting, we can wait, and another property. Is sold and becomes residential, how would we feel that? I would not feel good. So I would rather try as hard as we can to make sensible changes. May not be everything we think we need to do, but sensible changes and get them approved, let's take an iterative approach if we can.
I do think November tenth.
And I don't, I never heard the November tenth date.
So in in terms of timeline. I don't think that this will would be a particular issue this time around, but the deadline for submission of citizen petition articles for a special town meeting. Is twenty-eight days in advance of the meeting. So that backs up into, you know, around October ten or October twelve, fourteenth, I'm not sure that it's that exact date, I didn't count. But ahead of any actual town meeting, I would be inclined to. Give people the opportunity to be aware that they they have a deadline like that. It's always my preference for people who have issues that they want to get onto the warrant to actually. Hand them to the select board and see if the select board would be willing to take them up. I've not heard of any. Pending issues that people might want to raise. But if you delay the decision very much. It becomes much, much harder to notify people, give people reasonable notification. To give them the opportunity, if they wanted to, to go to the select board first, which means if somebody did submit a citizen petition article, it might not be formed very well. We've seen that happen in the past, so I would prefer to know much sooner rather than later if there was actually going to be. A special town meeting in the fall. So I would not delay your decision very long at all. I would not like to see, I don't think, that full list of things that you had on earlier in your presentation. Arrive at the annual town meeting all in one block, I think that might be a bit much to tack on to a regular annual town meeting.
Which is probably why most administrative things.
I just checked the calendar, Thanksgiving is November twenty seventh, which makes the seventeenth a plausible date. Just for the sake of your timeline.
Okay, well, we can certainly get a timeline to you. Next week or today, this week, the days.
Yeah, this week.
We can't talk about it until two weeks from today.
You'll have it for your meeting.
And 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 could you give us also a draft of the driveway? Anything that you have that you like, are serious answers.
And I guess certainly if you. There may be a consensus, maybe Tony has a recommendation that it's a no go in particular. Great, shall I go on to the harbor?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I know you. Take up various. Issues for updates, so Ian and I were just chatting. Management task force comes up next time, so. So what, the harbor management task force has actually been checking along for a year and a half. To develop a plan for the harbor, so there's not a lot of definition to that. The harbor is actually broadly defined by the. Policies are out of D E P. Includes actually the coastline and the beaches and the main harbor, we said it includes beaches, but we're not dealing with beach policy. It's just like, we have a whole other staff and group that deals with beach policy. It's grant funded, we have a hundred thousand dollar grant, and I'm not sure where that's from, and at BION's recommendation, Urban Harbors Institute out of UMass Boston, what's hired to do. Bulk of this work. So why there hasn't ever been a harbor management plan? There, it is something that many other, if which has Marvel, has many harbors have. And a state approved plan would allow us to develop certain land use changes that might. Be water harbor related that you would not otherwise be able to do if you don't have a management plan and. You know, I'm not sure exactly what those would be right now, but we were thinking about two ideas to particularly promote the commercial aspects of. Who's on the harbor management? Task force, this is the list, I've pointed these folks, but just to refresh your memory, here's. Here's our working group. We've actually had nineteen meetings. It's surprising. Like I said, we're not dealing with warrant policy. We had, early on, instructed this kind of robust mission statement and to one of the members, actually rewriting it, but it gives you at least a sense of what we were trying to, to, to do. It's evolving. We had public input from a forum that was well attended back a year ago. Urban Harbors, some interviews and a survey and the committee's still nineteen, I think. The challenge with the public input is that the context and the background matter. And Urban Harbors has had a challenge, you know, the process to take input, categorize it into issues and recommendations. But they often don't know that certain things already exist, or certain things don't make sense, or certain things. Don't, yeah, so we've had to do a lot of helping them to, to kind of make sense. What we were trying to avoid is a laundry list of, you know, a hundred and two recommendations that are overwhelming. So we've, we've been cha- a challenging client, I would say. Our progress so far is they've compiled a significant background about the resource area all in one place. And we're in the ongoing process of findings and recommendations. They were originally called issues and we were saying, let's call them findings. Which is, is a little bit more thoughtful. And like I said, it's hard for urban harbors to evaluate public input. Also, difficulties of the open meeting law in a document of this size is very challenging. When you want to get everybody's input in it, things that you have to have, it's a tedious process. And so the next step is we're sort of finalizing these issue findings and recommendations, setting priorities. And then to go share with some of the key stakeholders, you folks, the harbor advisory committee. And sort of our big picture that doesn't always get said out loud, that we think is we're in the harbor, the coast are the treasures that define Manchester. If you look at the Manchester him, the coast and the, you know, it's, it goes without, it's, it's so obvious, but it is what makes us essential from everything, from our views to access to boating, the ability to launch kayak, the ability to take a walk on the beach and run your dog. So there are five areas that Urban Harbors has sort of sussed out. We reorganized them and we find them. And I'll just give you the couple of key takeaways on each, just so to whet your appetite to think about it. Again, all in draft phase, all just work in progress. So the first is to support the marine economy that has three major parts, the boat yards and the water support, tourism and shell fishing. And beaches in that tourism. So you wanna think about harbor and broadly speaking, although many of the recommendations have sort of focused on the, what we consider the inner, the harbor itself. Provide safe navigable waterways, of course, sort of obvious, right? But we're not sure, the big issue that we've talked a great deal about, we've asked urban harbors for their advice and they don't have the experience on the issue. What is our capacity? Obviously, it's a finite, harbor is a finite resource. You know, it's only so big. And what is our ability in terms of capacity and borders? We're not saying that we are at capacity necessarily, except in some areas we might be approaching. What about peak use? Cause in a harbor with safety and water, heat seems to be the most important. People look out there right now. Navigation is easy. Nobody's going up and down the harbor, but you know, yesterday or Sunday afternoon, everybody's coming into scooter races. A squall in that kind of situation is a very different, that's what you have to really, we think you have to really think about. Emergency response, staffing and funding, what, how much can we afford? And how does that limit the resources and facilities maintenance? More facilities we have, you have a twenty year plan to repair docks and all those things. So maintaining public access, the urban harbor folks are always want every, ever, all of their plans say increase public access. We push back and say, we have a ton of public access, particularly for residents to the waterways through a tough point to, that's been a part to the beach. But we need to maintain it and keep an eye on it and not, and also things like views and distance that help tourists. Ensure healthy water quality while we test beaches for, as required. We don't have a comprehensive water quality set of data. So while there's a recommendation out there that somebody in the public said, which is to limit fertilizer application along the harbor to prevent growth in the harbor, we're actually not sure if that's, because we don't have data. It's a nice idea, but you know, we want policies that are based in fact, not just in conjecture. And then obviously the climate planning that the town has done is largely focused on downtown and the flooding. We, we have some recommendations about thinking more broadly. And one that we're testing right now, but thinking about is what if there were a more streamlined air, permanent process? At least within town for some of the coastal work for hardening certain facilities. What if, so for example, if there was a uniform seawall height, so that if Mark raises his seawall to ten feet and Tony does eight feet, John does twelve feet, you know, that, that's kind of the person at eight feet who came first is gonna get hurt, you know, like, so there's some work around that with Quantcom and, and over the state and less, and those kinds of things. So all of these are things that Urban Harbors actually hadn't really thought about too much, but they're doing a good job of keeping up with us and it's a work in progress. So that's all I have to say on that. We meet again Thursday at five thirty. Unfortunately, I know most of you will not be there because it's gonna be at a tough point. So, stay tuned. That's all I have for tonight.
Just, just one question. So all of the, all of the data collection are done. It's all done. Although they're constantly coming back, it sounds like the committee, with various clarifications because the history of
The data collection by the harbor management post gives a public opinion data as well as background data. We had sort of thought that they would be doing more quality data and it's question of capacity, that they would be able to help us think about, you know, what do we spend compared to other towns or how much public access we have compared to other towns and that kind of thing. And there's, there is, they have a softer science, softer social science. So, but I think there's some, I think we've identified some important things that we need to continue to keep an eye on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So, are any of the, this is Eli, sorry. Are any of the items that you're looking at likely at this point to generate articles on this, the annual town meeting warrant that are regulatory as opposed to financial in nature?
No on financial and no on regulatory. I think it's too soon. I think at some future date, there are some potentially regulatory things, but I think you know, there are policy type things that can be dealt with by harbor advisory perhaps, or we'll be paying our hat boo. I don't see too many town meeting things, certainly not in the near term.
Cool, thanks.
Maybe. Maybe funding requests for additional research or something like that, but we haven't crossed that bridge yet.
We need to cross that bridge. I think there's some of it that's, I think that the, the water quality protocol is established. And Urban Harbors has helped us to specify what that in depth would look like. And there are people who the capacity question is a much more nuanced question.
Timeline?
I think they want to be done by December. I think that's what the grant is or the contract. I'm less worried about having it be a pretty document and more worried about having it be a helpful document. They're quite focused on a game three.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Hopefully I won't shut the full media event.
If you do, we can restart it. We're pretty good.
Well, it's because I have sunny weather soup. Anyway, I think.
Okay. We're still here.
Good. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, the next item, the national grid hearings.
I move that the select board open public hearing, the petitions and national grid to install underground PVC conduit to twenty three Old Neck Road, Sixth Front Street and sixty one School Street.
Yeah.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Anne says yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hearing is open for twenty three Old Neck, Sixth Front Street and sixty one School Street. Is there anybody from National Grid who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Michael Casali and I'm representing National Grid at forty four River Street in Beverly. And, yeah, so so we are, we have these three petitions for Sixth Front Street, twenty three Old Neck and
Sixty one School.
Yeah, so we're just, we're petitioning to install conduits for sixty one school street, but petitions to install two, three inch conduits, approximately twenty feet. Because the customer is acquiring, is upgrading their service. So we need to install new conduits that are big enough to install new cables to feed them, their four hundred AM service they're requesting. Sixth Front Street, almost same thing. The customer is upgrading their service, so we're petitioning to install two, three inch conduits also, asking twenty feet from an existing manhole to that property. And twenty three Old Neck. We're petitioning to install, I think it's about two hundred eighty five feet of two four inch conduits. So the existing conduits and cables, cable that we have running under Old Neck Road right now is very old there. Rodden, the conduits are breaking. So we are replacing the, we're replacing all the conduits, the cables to meet our current standards that we have right now for infrastructure. And also we're installing bigger cables to feed our bigger cables to feed of twenty three Old Neck, four hundred AM service.
Any questions from the board?
None here.
Are there any questions from people who are signed in at the moment? Are there any questions for people who are present? In that case, I think we can close. Yes.
I move the select board to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.
The next is you, John?
Assuming we have no comments here.
I commented, should have commented during the hearing.
Check. I move the select board approve the national grid petitions to install underground PVC conduit to twenty three Old Neck, Sixth Front Street and sixty one School Street.
Further discussion.
Before, just for further discussion, there are some conditions that the DPW submitted to us, which will include in the permit to national grid.
Yes, having to do with the reconstruction.
Restoration of the roadway.
Okay.
That's part of that motion. Okay. Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy, Brian.
Yes.
And Jeff, Jeff.
Yes.
Okay. The other item was a request for a hearing for one forty sixth Bridge Street. And that was involved putting a conduit into a private road. And I think that the select board is not in a position to offer that.
Right. So technically, the authority of the select board to hold a hearing on this type of petition lies with impact to the public way. It seems to us that the impact here is solely on a private way. The, so it really isn't for the select board to provide for a hearing or approve or deny or install conditions. That would be the responsibility of the homeowner and the third party owners of the private way. Unless National Grid does any sort of deed research and determines that where they are proposing the conduit does impact public property. It doesn't seem like it does.
It does not.
We did, you know, I will say, we did hear from a number of neighbors. We also heard from the contractor of the one forty six Bridge Street. It sounds like that there is some discussion that will be having, that they will be having in the future. Along the same lines, talking about, you know, required restoration, but it's not for the board to select, the select board to oversee.
If they change their mind and want to go out to Bridge Street, then there's, there's absolutely no penalty for this. I've been skipped over now. Welcome to bring back whatever is necessary.
Yes, question.
Yes, of course.
My name is Ross Gates and I'm on the board of the Urban Avenue Association. So if they go out to Bridge Street from the property directly, that means they don't have to have a hearing or anything like that.
So then, then National Grid will come back to us as, and we will go through it as we did with the other.
Thank you. I misunderstood.
Anyone else?
Great.
Thank you for presenting. I hope we don't have to hear from any of you.
We can work it out.
Good luck.
Thank you. Our next item is on the introduction and appointment of Max Nasser.
So I interviewed Max last week for our facility planning committee. I was extremely impressed with Max's eagerness and dedication already to the town through the sustainability committee and his background really would provide some value to the facility planning committee. I'll let Max talk a little bit about that, but we talked about what, you know, his ability to serve on the committee. He feels he's able to do that, even though he serves on the other, he thinks he, he believes he has the time to dedicate to the committee. His background, he has a master's in public policy and a minor in energy and environment. His public, private and nonprofit sector experience, especially in this environment will serve us well as he sees how some of these big decisions about large scale capital projects and their level of efficiency can impact the town's future costs. The cost of insurance on these buildings and even possibly put us in a position for favorable funding or borrowing opportunities because of those efficiency measures if we choose to go. But he has experience, actually, you know, in his professional life seeking out those types of opportunities. So with that.
Nice to have you again.
No, my pleasure. It's, you know, the honor to be considered. I, yeah, I was, I, I've been working with the sustainability thing since January. working with the Sustainability Committee since January, so that's when I last saw you, and also, um yeah. And I think that my interest with the Sustainability Committee was really not just in um uh it's been a lot of focus on waste streams and trash, obviously, right, a pertinent topic these days.
Totally not.
Right, right. No, no, uh we'll not touch on that, but um for me, the the question really is also on kind of future um not just greening of community, but it's really making things more resilient in the future, of course, just heard from, uh it's great about of course coast to hardening and those sorts of measures, and it's extremely relevant to speak about how future public facilities get built. Um the other key piece is that there is, and this is something I understand building, creating coordination with DPW will hopefully bring back to you at a certain point. Um the climate leader communities grants that are available from the state if different communities, if communities kind of commit to various actions, create plans, then that zero. Um all these various things, it basically can unlock, you know, another million dollars or so to offset potentially, um you know, decide to upgrade some of the facilities compared to a kind of business as usual plan. Uh that could actually be offset to some extent by um some state grants. And so the point simply is that, you know, we could make buildings more resilient, which could result in potentially lower insurance costs over the long term, save the town money. Um could be obviously lower environmental impact or energy usage of these facilities, uh also pretty built, which also again saves town money over time. So um it's really about thinking about how to coordinate those pieces, you know, so bringing the lens together in a way that hopefully will be be long-term uh better outcome. But yeah, I think the last piece that Tony was mentioning is just in 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 the case of issuing bonding for these facilities to be built. Uh their presence around uh the the state as well as certain municipalities wishing they would take green bonds or other kind of special bonds or kind of the use of the proceeds of the bond, they should go on what it's need used for is be more transparent. Um private investors actually quite like these issuances, uh because there's more transparency, they know where the money's going, they can say we've invested in this impactful sort of product, and you can actually see a lower uh financing cost ultimately to the, to to town for doing that in some cases, not in all cases, but in some cases, so um my point is, Tony and we're talking about how that, there are case studies out there of how it's done. So again, if we're going to issue a long-term bond, you know, we may as well make sure that we take advantage of all the different um avenues you can do to to again, keep it a facility responsible. So. That's my little spiel. Uh. Right, go ahead.
Wrong.
Yeah, no. Yeah, I thank you for raising your hand again, and that's two committees. But that's great, you feel lucky given your background and provide some input on a lot of projects that are really on a burner for us.
Okay, well, I move that the select board appoint Max, is it Ms. Irving or Ms. Irving? As an at-large, at-large member on the Facility Planning Committee for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Was the discussion?
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back and sorry we made you sit through a process.
Yeah, it's great, oh, very interesting. You might be surprised.
You have a very low of level.
Yeah. All bar.
I I own them as town too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um.
It's just a, that's a group.
Okay, um. Matt, if there are six. Rotary um is in the consent agenda, but please explain to us what.
What we're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so um we uh we had a fundraising auction last May, and one of the things we put up on auction was a lobster boil on the beach, and sixteen people bid on it and won it, and so now we're trying to perform that task of delivering dinner. Probably, you know, it's on September thirteenth, and it's probably gonna start at like forty afternoon and ends like by eight thirty, nine o'clock. It's uh just food, uh you know, no liquor or anything like that, um but um you know, the town recommending clearly advised us that we should come before the selecting to use the beach, okay, uh select avoid, and that's why we're here. Uh we still have to get our permit for the food from the uh health department and notify the the fire department and see what he has to say about us having a propane, you know, boil, boil in the food. So that's the extent of the thing, uh sixteen people. There could be a couple of people that aren't from town, so we'll probably talk to the chief about just letting him know that we might have a couple of people probably after hours, September thirteenth is still in the season, when you shouldn't be there if you're non-resident, so. Well, I think it's October first, I thought. Then we can pack it, so we'll talk to everybody, we we know the drill for most of the big things we do, this little one caught us by surprise, because there's only sixteen people coming. So that's why we're a little late on doing this.
I'm uh as a member, former member of the Rotary, I I worked these last piece, really successful, and uh the diligence, you know, everything they do. I don't know, I would certainly make sure we check if he. Help him.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a couple of us who sort of say uh certified.
I mean, because I don't think Sean's gonna be there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Sean pretty much gets the free pass with Wendy, I would suggest, right, so right on turn.
Yeah, my my update, I haven't done an update class, but I am, I was certified for me.
That's all we consent agenda, right?
It's it's so in the consent agenda, we will vote on that all all at once, but I. I think there are no questions and and a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Despite his recommendation. Despite your recommendation.
I might argue.
The recommendation will go a long way. Well, have a good night.
Well, we. Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, who is on updates? John?
Uh yeah. Got a couple of things here. Uh I mentioned the DPW contract for the installers of the meters last meeting, and they have signed that contract, and in fact, the contractor is gonna put together a video that they'll put on the website that will go through all of the installation activities for typical installation um installation work for a meter, and more to the point, go over how the software works, so people can put this on their phone and track their meters, so all of that information will be in a video that will be done this month. And they will start this month with the the installation of the meters. Um. Chuck also mentioned he's pushed up a the to-do project with regard to the sidewalk to the beach from Masconomo to the beach, and he wants to redo that sidewalk that's been, I think, on the to-do list for some time, including the the section and of that is cement that is, that curves around the parking lot. He'd like to redo all of that, probably expand the parking of the sidewalk a little bit, put in a curb, and uh have some ADA compliant um ramps at the intersections. So he's gonna try and work that out with the 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 folks, the contractors that are gonna be working on Mill Street and Forestry that are cleaning that up after all the construction that's there, so that is uh something that may happen as early as October. So planning on that. Um. The library, um. I attended a meeting with them about a week or so ago, they're busy uh planning for an ADA compliant bathroom. And Nate was there, and he informed us that there is a bill-in committee that will require ADA bathrooms to have an adult changing station. Which may, it has to come out of committee, but if it hits, it would be in two thousand twenty-seven. An adult changing station is like a dental chair. And is a very large structure that would change plans for a lot of bathrooms that get built, because you'd need several more square feet for this. Right now, ADA bathrooms need to have a a child-changing station, which is a, just a shelf that flips up against the wall, this is not that. So they uh are trying to move along as quickly as possible, so they'd be grandfathered in, and it's not would be, would not be something they'd have to wrestle with, because that, they've got limited space in the libraries, we all know. But uh.
Pretty nice. I'm fixing.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So uh and other than that, um well, you're gonna report, I guess, on on the lunch today, I guess, and uh.
You can.
The Seaway, okay, all right. Um we, several seniors, of which I am a member, went to uh lunch using the CADA shuttle today. We got a picture, we're gonna have an article, it'll be very nice, something to promote, and we went to uh what was the?
Showbridge.
Showbridge Pub. Very nice, so they picked, picked everybody up at their houses, took us all up there, Tony was there, so was uh, so was Deb. Myself, and we came back, everything worked very smoothly, they were on time, and uh it was something to see how the service worked as well as to uh get some material to kind of promote CADA. So uh we all just called, said, this is where we're going, and by the way, there'll be some other people that'll be calling in the next day or so, and there were, I guess, a total of seven of us. Went, so it was very.
It's like two dollar.
This is free.
That's.
Right now it's.
Right now it's free through the end of the year, and depending upon grant situations, it may be free beyond that. But it's, I think it's been free for maybe two years or so, for quite some time, it did cost two dollars one time, and then some grant money became available, and so uh.
But it's it's minimal if it does cost.
Yeah, it's two dol, it would be two dollars if it were, if that were to change. So anyway, it's a, it's an effort to kind of get a little more high-profile uh exposure for that service here in town, which will go and do everything, our town, our town van service is very good, but it really focuses focuses on medical uh services and has limited numbers of time during the week that it operates, so it really has to focus on that, and CADA will take you anywhere within its, for for for, you know, wherever you wanna go within its service reason, region, which is very similar to what our services. So uh that's what the story is with the seniors, and I guess that's it, you'll speak about the K. Sorry.
Yeah, just to that point, I think, you know, we were on two different vans, they were both like extremely clean and accessible.
He went out on one and came back on another one, so.
Both drivers were very personable and and careful drivers. Uh we had really good conversation about, you know, the value in using the service, you know, the fact that you don't have to worry about parking, you don't have to worry about driving, you don't have to worry about uh a number of, a number of elements, and you get to, you know, chat with the folks that you're going on uh to lunch with, or um you know, maybe meet some new people, but there's a lot of value in it, and we're gonna try to promote that through a, through an article uh next week, so.
Yeah. The van's all twelve people, and so we were seven, so it's it's good.
So a couple of things, let's see, on Bike and Ped, they have been working with the Rotary Club on a fall community fundraiser. Um a bike, biking fundraiser, so um I guess the Rotary is taking the lead on this and just looking for input from Bike and Ped, so they may be coming to us at some point for approval of something, because I think Masco is the hub. Um it would include a children's obstacle course, an eight-mile family ride, and a longer route to Essex. So again, Bike and Ped is just supporting it, the Rotary seems to be driving that. Um also, the recent kids Pan Mass Challenge had very strong support from the community, fifty-four kids had registered, and there was possibly a hundred additional, we raised eight to ten thousand dollars. Um I believe the, they also, the Bike and Ped Committee also recently provided support for the Brick Sidewalk Program, I missed that meeting where they actually discussed the Brick Sidewalk Program, Mark gave a um presentation, Mark Resnick, to Bike and Ped to support um brick sidewalks in the downtown, uh but I I missed that particular conversation, so I didn't get the specifics on that. Um.
I I did too, I know, I know that he talked about potentially um bringing it to you tonight, but we ended up uh pushing it to our next meeting, because
Okay.
he'll have some more communication to do with DPW.
Okay. Yeah, I'm interested in learning more about that, um you know, as a lady who sometimes wears heels, I'm always hesitant on the cobblestones and the bricks, but I'm sure it can be done in such a way we won't uh increase our risk for falls. Um let's see, what else? Um I think, uh so the Bike and Ped Committee also uh is participating in the upcoming coastal cleanup with the Sustainability Committee on September twenty-first. And also they are going to be, either are, are going to be performing walk audits, so just going around, looking at our local sidewalks for the conditions and bike accommodations, I guess, kind of just taking a look, seeing an inventory, you know, what what is what's the state of the land out there, so that's um, that's it on Bike and Ped. Uh the Facilities Planning Committee, we, um Chuck and Nate gave us a nice tour of fire station, police station, and Essex's public safety building. Um and this Friday, we're going to uh our DPW, Rockport New DPW and the proposed DPW site on School Street. So um I happen to write a lot of things down, I took a lot of notes about requirements, and there are definitely some opportunities where I think we just need to think a little bit differently and not assume we need some of the space we already have, for example, uh the Police Department downstairs, they have this area where they have all of these old archive documents. Well, there are other ways of handling that, rather than building a room or space for that in a new police station, you know, you can have the documents uh offloaded to Iron Mountain or some other supplier, which does document storage as a business. Um or you can digitize them, whatever, but so there, what I tried to look at when we got our tours is tried to think about what are the requirements we might need to push on a little bit. And also um when we toured the new Essex facility, um made note of, tried to make note of some lessons learned, both positive and you know, things they would do differently, so we can take advantage of that. Um but the tours are very helpful, and I thank uh Tony, you, and Chuck, and everybody for putting them, pulling them all together, because they are really, really helpful. That's it.
Um. Ox and Rec. The um you heard Cheryl, what you didn't hear is actually what happened. And apparently, the two kids were not swimming initially, swimming, they were uh playing some kind of football, the ball. And a wave came in and took the kids' feet out and dragged them out, and that's what happened. So uh you know, it wasn't like they were out there. They they thought they were safe.
Yeah.
So that's something, but uh that's, but what we saw was, was excellent, you know, response. The kind of, they approved the carnival, uh it will be before us, probably next meeting, because uh the potential exists that the Legion is gonna get involved with alcohol, so they wanna get uh just submit one application. Uh it'd be a fundraiser for the Legion as well, and um then just the discussions have evolved about actually maybe in the future creating an entire homecoming week, starting with because the Codboard Boat Race is the uh previous Sunday, and they're doing something throughout, creating a homecoming week and ending it with the carnival.
Hmm.
Uh discussions with the the Masons about moving their lobster bake to that weekend as opposed to what it was two weeks ago, and everyone's on board, it it seems like it can be a.
Which weekend is the?
That's the, after the boat race?
So the uh this year, the Codboard Boat Race is the twelfth, so it'll be the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, fall, that. So usually, right after uh.
Columbus.
Right after. It costs for pilgrims.
I was gonna say, you don't.
It doesn't compete with the top, so okay. Uh so that's going on, so we should see that in uh next meeting. Uh the naming of the fields, uh they follow the recommendations, and uh as far as publishing it, I think it's on the website, and they'll be, uh they've got it narrowed down to two names at this point. And uh we'll be presenting, hopefully be able to present something to us in the not too distant future, what their recommendations are on that. Uh there's a pickleball tournament during September twentieth, so keep your eyes and ears open for that. And um that's for uh Ox and Rec, uh ZBA didn't have anything the month of uh August, and I I haven't seen what they've got planned for uh, that's three weeks away, so. And that's what I got.
Thank you.
I don't have too much, we heard from the planning board, uh Harvard Advisory won't meet till week after next, next week. Um Essex Tech wise, we welcome the freshman class of five hundred and thirty-eight kids, their biggest class to date. Now. Which was good, we finished our superintendent director evaluation, and Dr. Riccio got a grade of exemplary. And we're still waiting on the terms of a possible lottery situation for next year uh from the state, so we haven't. They, they're going back and forth.
I've been asked about. I've been asked about uh interest as enrollment into the year.
Yeah, five hundred and thirty in this class.
The freshman class.
That's a lot of kids.
Yeah, how many kids, how many towns and communities is Essex?
Seven, well seventeen member districts, and then, but it's really like fifty three altogether.
And how many Manchester Essex kids are in that class?
I don't know, we don't, I haven't got the numbers yet, so they won't give me that for another.
Something again, that question.
Last week in October.
Found the percolators to what the status is of that.
Right, so we're in a whole pattern right now. There's too many questions and no answers.
The School Committee is meeting. Now, um and um. The Finance Committee hasn't got itself organized yet, um but I did go to a Board of Health meeting. Where they uh. Approved a shared septic system for. A house that's at the end, toward the end of Harbor Street, where there's a house and a and a carriage house. The carriage house has been used for storage, they want to turn it into an actual house that doesn't have any land, they eventually decided that they could. Share the septic system with the main house, which is large enough, has enough capacity, so a little more housing. Without um. The town isn't doing anything other than improving the septic system, I guess there are probably other things that need to be. I think they've got plenty more to improve, but there's undoubtedly something else that they need to improve. Um and the gates have got another thirty days, um. They they there was an interior inspection, as people have speculated, there's effort of supporting. Um and um they, their lawyer is taking a strong interest in in moving things along. Um but didn't have. He didn't know of a moving company that came in and cleaned out um years of of say junk.
I've seen the commercials, nine hundred point, and it all goes away.
Yeah, yeah, well, anyway, uh I know.
It's unlikely that the gate gates will have completed everything on the inspection report in thirty days. On the other hand, as long as they seem to be making.
They're moving, I I drive by there frequently, um I saw a dumpster out there last week, which I was surprised, I didn't think we allowed dumpsters on the street, but. Making an exception. But um there was activity, I saw some new siding um gonna go up, so I I definitely think there's repairs being made to what extent, you know, I can't tell.
Looks like they're moving along, so.
Yeah, so um I I think as long as they continue to make progress, um.
When when is our town, when is the town's next visual inspection planned?
I don't know if there is another visual inspection planned.
I think that the.
They're right now, they were just getting updates on a weekly basis uh from the owners of the property.
And I forgot when their their next meeting is, but it's in the third weekend sector.
So you should have some evidence, though, because, like I said, you can only see certain things from the outside, right?
And that's that for me, um. Do I have uh? Okay, I think I moved that the. Go enough the consent agenda, I moved it to select word, through the consent agenda items A, B, and C. Discussion.
Yes.
Kathy, I'm gonna web stain.
Answers yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Yeah, you ready? I moved that the Select Board approved the special event permit for the Manchester Essex Rotary for Singing Beach on September thirteenth, twenty twenty five. With a rain date of September fourteenth, twenty twenty five, with the condition to contact the Board of Health for any necessary permits they require.
Back. Okay, John.
Yes.
Answers yes, I'm staying.
Yes.
Um administration.
Alright, so uh first, just a quick update on trash, uh. We are still uh only receiving curbside collection for trash and not receiving curbside collection for recycling. Chuck and I have a call with uh Dan, which is the. This region's director, who's been on a lot of the uh municipal calls. Uh that I've been on, but this is gonna be more of a direct conversation. Uh we, we have noticed that there are other communities that are receiving some sort of recycling uh collection. Uh and Beverly, Beverly received a permit from DEP that allowed recycling and trash to be mixed. So they're able to do it all together, uh Ipswich, I think, is receiving some curbside collection. But it's unclear really, you know, how consistent that is and what their ability is to provide some collection for us. Uh you know, a lot of the communities that are getting that service don't have a transfer station. And are experiencing uh more impact than than we are. Uh so we're, you know, continuing to encourage our residents to use the transfer station, it continues to be open on extended hours. Um but we are trying to receive some sort of uh curbside collection for recycling, even if it's in a. One every couple of week type schedule, uh we are not pleased with the services that we're receiving from Republic at the moment. Uh it's been two months, you know, that they've been in this strike, and. Leading up to July first, back in June, uh they told every. I mean, you know, all of the fourteen municipalities that we that we would not experience any interruption in service, and they were planning, you know, to have. Uh supplementary service install or staff to to uh install that. Uh they've obviously dealt with a lot of um delays because of the strike, because of activities of the strike. Or delaying the efficiency of their collection, uh but we wanna speak, you know, directly to them about. The needs here in Manchester, uh we also wanna talk to them about uh the. They are owe us a bill for July, um they've talked about reducing the bill. Uh to eliminate the cost of recycle uh curbside collection costs that didn't occur. Uh but I think it goes a little bit beyond that, and we wanna have a discussion about that as well. Supposedly, on the strike, they met with Teamsters on Thursday, but we haven't gotten an update on on where that went. I believe they've involved a mediator, um so we'll see, we'll see what's happening there. Also, when I spoke with Andrew at Black Earth, uh he was, we've we've had a lot of complaints about. Um the queue, you know, when a lot of people, when a lot of the residents are going there, um it could be improved, also some. Uh complaints that there's uh people have seen non-residents or people without stickers potentially dropping. Trash or recycling there, so you know, stepping up enforcement, really need to have the resident sticker to be able to use the transfer station. So he's gonna work on that as well.
It is, it is awkward going in there. And the compo side too is also, so it it needs some fine tuning, there's no.
Yes, so he's he's gonna try, he's a couple of different ideas, he said he's gonna try over the next two to three weeks. Um if if we see an improvement, great, if not, we're gonna get a little bit more involved in what that, the fine tuning of that uh setup. Uh on Gordon College, it was uh, there was an article in the Cricket regarding a meeting that the town had with Gordon College. About a possible uh residential development on their property, a group of um. Uh you know, Manchester volunteers or appointed officials of different committees. Uh met with Gordon a week ago or so now, or two weeks ago now, uh it was the first time that this group has met with Gordon. Uh it's very early in the process, uh there's still a lot of uh details and uh to be worked out, uh the the. Uh exchange or the transaction of the property hasn't been finalized yet, uh but I will say that, you know, we are pleased that Gordon is. Uh inviting us into the room uh in the early phases of the of the conversation. Uh we'll be having some more internal conversations and conversations with Gordon uh about those details and, you know, wanna, they they are. Looking for our input, so that's that's a good uh start to the process. Um but we want residents to know that we're, it's very early in the in the process, and that we're gonna continue to work with them and. Ensure that there is public communication around the project. Uh Senior Center, I received a status update from Kinetik, this is the consultant that we hired to do a fundraising feasibility study. Uh they found, they got excellent results, they had over a hundred and twenty four responses. Which includes thirty plus interviews and ninety plus survey responses, they believe that our fundraising could be accomplished in a twelve month period. Um also Chuck and Nate and I toured the Mason's Building uh last week. Uh so it was good to get in there and see the layout of the existing facility. Uh we're working uh with the Masons to make progress on the condo docks, uh we wanna get those condo docks uh. Accomplished as soon as possible so that the fundraising campaign can start shortly thereafter. And then I'll be meeting with the Council on Aging Board on the tenth, I've met with the friends a few times, uh with John. Uh been trying to speak with some other communities who have a senior center. About the job description of their uh COA Director. So and and my next step is to get input from the COA Board, so I really wanna get input from the board before we put that job description out. It's important that we update that to include the future. Uh you know, vision of the of the Council on Aging, you know, and the Senior Center and whatever type of programming. Uh might be included with that. Uh we have a touch a truck event on Saturday, September twentieth, from eleven to twelve thirty, here in the Town Hall Parking Lot. Also, the Board of Health has their annual flu clinic on Wednesday, September twenty fourth, from nine AM to noon at the American Legion Hall. Uh registration can be done online, also, if you have any issues with registering online, you can call the Town Hall. Speak to either Council on Aging or um uh if you need a high dose. Or the Board of Health uh will help register residents for the clinic. Uh for the Fire Department, we have, our ladder truck is back in service uh after some necessary repairs. And also, the Fire Department and the Police Department hosted a school slush event uh last week on the twenty eighth, which was very well attended. Kathy spoke about the Facility Planning Committee already, uh on Monday, the twenty fifth. Uh Bull Chiefs and I went over to Essex uh for a, an event with Congressman Moulton. Uh to talk about the importance of federal funding for preparing for potential natural disasters. Also, uh we are, last week, um members of the Affordable Housing Trust, Mark Resnick and I. Uh met with Senator Tar and Secretary Augustus of uh Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to talk about. Um the Powder House uh property and how to. What our next steps are in order to get those properties included in the SHI. Uh we also talked a lot about the need for assistance financially or technical assistance eh with our housing authority. Um and there, the uh Secretary spoke to us at length about a lot of the new programs and funding opportunities that that the. State has put forward, so uh we will, the Affordable Housing Trust will try to. Uh work with the Housing Authority to educate them on, you know, what those options are, uh and a lot of them are specific to. Improving existing facilities and finding partners to help uh with that process. Um on the twenty seventh, Ann, John, uh Chief Fitzgerald and I went over to. Um Carolyn Anderson's house to present her the Boston Post cane cane uh at ninety nine, ninety nine years old. Uh she's the second woman to receive the cane, she was extremely excited to have us there, uh she was. Um you know, smiling, laughing, exchanging stories, it was a really cool event, and I think she really appreciated that. Um and then uh we talked about CADA, but uh so I'll skip that, and municipal aggregation. Tiffy and I met with Colonial Power, uh our municipal aggregation plan has been approved by the state. So now we're talking about what the next steps are as far as X, you know, seeking or soliciting. Uh pricing, executing a contract, and then rolling that out to the residents. I will put that on the agenda for the next meeting, uh hopefully Colonial Power can be here. Um a couple of things for us to think about, uh one is they're soliciting indicative pricing now. When we go to uh executable pricing, when they get that pricing, it's a very quick turnaround. Cause it changes so quickly, so we'll need the board to authorize myself to be able to execute that. Contract in a quick fashion when we get that pricing. Um when you go, when you roll out municipal aggregation, typically towns will present to their residents a default plan. A uh and then two other optional plans and an opt-out option. Uh some towns, the default plan would be uh either the least expensive. Uh supply of energy, some towns would have the default plan be a mix of some clean energy and some not. And then some will use the default plan to be the most clean uh supply option, it also happens to be the most expensive. And then you your residents have the choice of either do nothing and get the default plan, or. Switch to one of the other options, or opt out completely and just stay with National Grid. Uh i- in my opinion, if if or unsolicited recommendation, I think that the default should be the cheapest option.
Yeah.
And you give residents the option to pay more for cleaner energy.
I agree.
Yeah, um so.
Aging population.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's, you know, it's important to promote the op- the opportunity to uh pay for cleaner energy, but I think it shouldn't be the default.
Right, so.
So that's that's by my report. I was gonna do a two-week look ahead, but given the time, I'll I'll wrap it up there. I can always do a recap of the night.
Right.